Shabby little place.
Ten o'clock?
All right, at ten o'clock, Thursday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Board of Equalization, meeting to order.
Thank you.
First item, roll call, Mr. Brett Towns.
Present.
Ms. Eleanor Thompson.
Present.
And I'm Patrick Crawley. All right, we have the first agenda item and discussion and possible action regarding approval of the minutes of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes.
A second.
Oh, in the favor.
Aye.
Next item is B O E number forty-four, which is the property at thirty-six-hundred Oakbrier Drive in Choctaw, Lisa McWhorter Trust. Is this by phone?
It is, and I believe the assessor wants to make some comments first, so I'm going to call Mr. Jim McWhorter, he's going to be representing.
Okay. Yeah, before we get started, let's, for the record, have the assessor tell us who all is going to be speaking today.
So my name is Michael Frangione, I represent the residential side of the county assessor's office, and for, after the residential hearing, there'll be three commercial properties, and those presenting will be on the commercial appraisal side, Jason Hill and Chad Stayskal.
Present. All right, do we need to spell one of those things?
I can spell Stayskal for if you'd like. It is S.T.E.J.S.K.A.L.
Wow. All right, Mr. McWhorter?
Yeah, this is Jim.
Jim, this is, this is Patrick Crawley, I'm the chairman of the Board of Equalization here in Oklahoma County, and the first item we have on our agenda is your property at thirty-six-hundred Oakbrier Drive in Choctaw, is that correct?
Yes, thank you for considering this.
All right, first, I want to let you know that according to the information I have, the assessor has assessed this property at a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, is that correct, assessor?
That was the first assessment I got, and then they did an update on that with better comps.
All right, what is, what's the assessor's value?
So, this is what I was gonna mention, and I had previously talked to Mr. McWhorter after he was originally supposed to be scheduled here, based on running some better comps after the fact, the original comp report did not really support his current situation. He is, he has an eight-hundred-square-foot house, he does have a lot of land, but the square footage is far under than the original comps that you were given, which is why he stayed on the value that he did. I ran a separate comp report that you do not have in front of you, getting to properties that are just like his in size and square footage, and instead of one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, I would like to make a recommended value of one-hundred-twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred dollars.
Hear that, Mr. McWhorter?
Yes, sir, yes, I did, thank you.
Okay. How much property we talking about here in Choctaw?
I'm sorry?
How much property is it, I mean acreage?
Oh, let me get you that, I have the acreage as one-point-one-seven acres.
All right, Mr. McWhorter, the assessor has lowered its assessed value of your property to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred. You can either accept that or reject it, and we will hear from you, and I'll let you know, we can, we don't have anything that we're particularly tied to the board members here, we will look at what we think the fair market value of property is, maybe lower than what the assessor says, maybe higher than what the assessor says, but you have an opportunity to either agree or reject the offer of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred.
Well, I mean, at this point, I've been a builder, developer for over forty years now, and I'm also a real estate broker, so I understand about comps and all of this. My thing with, with that and current building projects that I have, the initial one-fifty-two is what, I saw that and I thought, oh my gosh, I built fifteen of those and retired now, but, you know, that's just, it was way off balance, and I understand the lack of comps in the area with small homes like that, but that house was built in nineteen eighty or something, and so it's pretty old, and I had compared it to a recent sale that I had of another property I owned, and I felt like it was a more fair value, would have been a hundred and eight thousand, not considering that, you know, the, excuse me, the acreage probably being more valuable than the city lot, and I was just going by, you know, what we build for today and all, and I had originally submitted that I thought a more fair value was a hundred and eight thousand. I feel like, like maybe many citizens do, that you're kind of between a rock and a hard spot. I can't tell you how much I appreciate somebody taking the initiative in the assessor's office and pursuing this and recommending this one twenty-eight six. I will accept that. At this point, I don't, I don't have any way to document anything except to tell you how much it actually costs to build brand-new per square foot, and so that's, and I don't know how to tell you how mu, I don't build freight houses that are, you know, covered with vinyl siding, and so everything I do is much more upgrade and all, but even with that, you know, it's, I'm just glad somebody really took the initiative to look at this, and I didn't even ask them to.
Okay.
Do you mind telling me what your cost per square foot is on your bills now?
On our bills now, I just completed some brick-built duplexes in Midwest City in a new addition that we put in, we were just able to complete them because, and we started them, oh goodness, almost a year ago, and, and, anyway, I'm fumbling around here, I'm gonna divide this out for you. We, we built those, and they're brick, granite countertop, everything that goes into a lot of, you know, upgraded homes, but they're a lot, they're smaller because they're duplexes, they're investment property, they have a one-car oversized garage, and, but we built those for a hundred and twenty-five a square foot, and without the land, and, and the price, the lumber prices are down lower than what we paid for lumber when we framed those, but we had to wait to get full power because O G N is so far behind getting transformers, and they just got those in about six weeks ago to where this, this investor can go ahead and start leasing this first batch, and we've still got, you know, dozens more to build, so, but that's what, that's my most recent ones, and...
Okay, well, we, I appreciate, we appreciate your input there, but let's get right to the issue, you're, you're going to accept the assessor's value of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have an agreement, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move on B O E number forty-four that we accept the revised assessor's valuation of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred on this property.
My second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. McWhorter, we've, we'll go along with your agreed price with the assessor of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred dollars, and Friday there'll be a letter comes out to that, okay?
Okay, thank you all so much, and for the time you invest in reviewing these for people, we appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate your input, sir.
My apologies for not being able to attend in person.
That's fine, that's fine, we, we do a number of these by phone. All right.
All right, you all have a blessed day.
All right, thank you, sir. Bye.
Thank you.
All right, I move a hearing on B O E number forty-four, which is by agreement, been set, open up the hearing on B O E ninety-five, which is property at fifty-two-hundred North Classen Boulevard, this is commercial property owned by the Gate, Gateate? Are they here?
And Gaatri. So these next three are going to be represented by Peter Bach, he is by phone, we'll see if the house works this time, Peter Bach.
B O C K?
B A C H, like the musician.
Hi, this is Peter.
Yes, Mr. Bach?
Yes, sir.
This is Patrick Crawley, I'm chairman of the Board of Equalization in Oklahoma County, we have a piece of your property at fifty-two-hundred North Classen Drive, that's Classen Drive, okay, and that's the issue in front of us right now, it looks like the assessor has assessed the property at two-point-two million dollars, and you're asking the board for a million four-twenty-five, am I correct?
Yes, sir, let me pull up that account real quick.
Sure. Looks like it's the Belle Isle addition.
Okay, yes, sir, this is the sleep-in.
It's the sleep-in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so I guess, does the county want to go first, or should I go first?
No, the way this works, I guess you definitely have been in front of us before, but the way it works is we're going to listen to what you want to tell us about this property first, then we'll hear from the assessor, and then you'll have an opportunity to respond to the assessor.
Okay, great.
All right, so, yeah, just tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Okay, great, so I did submit the evidence, hopefully everyone has a copy of that in front of them, hopefully it works project on the screen, or, does, does everyone see the industry income model?
Yes.
Yes, we got everything that you've...
Perfect.
With the record, dear.
Perfect. All right, good deal, so I'll go ahead and start, so this is the sleep-in hotel, North Classen Circle, it is a, you know, we consider this a mid-scale class hotel, and at the top you can see the last three years of reported revenues, we have twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, we reported five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, which is actually less than what they reported in twenty-twenty-one, so twenty-twenty-one was six-hundred-and-six thousand, so the hotel did experience a revenue loss, you know, this is an income-producing property, so we can believe the income approach is the best valuation method for this hotel, and what we have done is we run an income approach using the industry standard for expense, and then we also use an actual income analysis using the owner's actual expense, so we remove any non-liable expenses such as amortization, depreciation, and interest, and for this account, the first one we sent in, we used a seventy-two percent for expense, the industry publication that we use shows sixty-seven to seventy-four percent for expense, so we're using seventy-two, and then add three percent for the reserves of the F F and E replacements that the owner is responsible for, and then we apply the ten percent cap rate and gives us one million, three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. The other valuation I sent in uses the seventy percent expense, and we removed the reserve, so just seven percent, it gives us one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, and the last one was using the owner's actual expense, the actual profit and loss statement that we submitted, we did remove the interest from the expense, he's at seventy-six percent expense, so looking at his profit and loss statement, we can see that he is in line with what the industry supports, and so when we use this actual expense, seventy-six percent, and apply the ten percent cap rate, we get one million, three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. So the, the industry income, you know, approach that we're using is the exact approach that the county uses and has used on multiple accounts, and seventy percent and a ten percent cap rate, that's exactly what we're using, but unfortunately, the county was not willing to work with us on this account, and so my opinion of value would be just, you know, using the seventy percent and the ten percent for, ten percent cap rate, which gives us the market value of one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, and you can see the notice value, that's the two-point-two million, and it didn't, didn't change from last year, yet, yet there was the revenue loss from twenty-twenty-one, so that's the, that's the evidence that we have submitted, and then I can move on to what the county says, and then answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay, all right, well, we'll hear from the assessor now.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Peter, this is Jason, a commercial appraiser in Oklahoma County, and going to this here, this property is located in a pretty good area of the county, right by major shopping in the interstate area, everyone can see where it is. The value on this property was set in a twenty-twenty-one hearing at forty thousand dollars a room. Hearing officer did do an income analysis using actual income provided for twenty-twenty-two on the profit and loss, and one thing is, there was no occupancy given, so we didn't have that to work with, occupancy rate for this year, and it looks like, yeah, interest paid is removed, taxes, licenses removed, and it came up with that county value of this, one million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, and that is subtracting the personal property, and then, which is lower than what we have it on, but we also, the hearing officer also found three comps, and these three comps, average room, were in between, or the low came in at twenty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-one, and the high came in at forty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars per room. The, the media, the average was thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy per room.
And how many rooms we talking about?
We are talking about fifty-five rooms. It was built in two thousand and six, average quality. Do you know by chance what the occupancy was?
No, we don't, we don't have the S P R star report for this account, which would show the actual occupancy rep par and average daily rate, you know, with the actual, so, you know, and, you know, we can gross up, you know, we have the room numbers, we can gross up to, and using that, using the market average daily rate to see what the, you know, potential gross income would be, and then, you know, yeah, you can apply a, a market occupancy, but I think the actual, providing the actual profit and loss statements for the last three years is sufficient enough to run the income approach, and, you know, the county income approach did come in at that one-point-nine million, so, you know, we are close on that one, one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, and I don't, I don't know what the exact number you said was for the in, for the income analysis by the county, what was that figure?
One million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five. And that was using sixty-two-point-four-three expenses, percent expenses.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, I'm using seventy percent, which I think is fair, that is what, I've got a lot of notes of decisions back, and I've been seeing the income analysis, and the county is usually using that seventy percent and a ten percent cap rate, but, you know, we are, I think, we are close, I mean, the, the county is showing an adjustment is warranted using the industry, using the income analysis, but I've got one-point-nine valuation, but, but yeah, I don't have the occupancy for this hotel.
Okay, do you have any else from the assessor?
One other, just in our income analysis, we also use the ten-point-two-five cap rate compared to your ten.
Okay, ten-point-two-five, so, so if I'm using the seventy percent, yeah, ten-point-two-five, obviously my comment a little bit lower.
Yeah.
And, so you guys are, you said you're using sixty-two percent for expense on this one?
Sixty-two-point-four-three.
Okay. Okay, so, and one million, so, I guess, in, in closing, I would, I asked that the board would give consideration to the county's income analysis at the one-point-nine, or my valuation of one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, I think anywhere in between that range is a fair valuation for the property, based on the income provided, and I just ask that the board give some consideration of the income approach.
All right, so that I understand what you're saying here, I'll make sure, you're saying that you want the board to set the value of your property somewhere between one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand and one million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How, how did we get to one million and seven? I got one million, four-twenty-five.
That's, that was initially what we looked at, according to your documents, was a million, four-twenty-five, you're telling us now, if I understand this right, that the bottom line, bottom figure is a million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, correct?
Correct, yeah, after I received a few notice of decisions for other accounts, I saw that the county was using seventy percent, I had already submitted the one that you guys see, using like the seventy-three, seventy-two percent expense, so I did adjust that, you know, I always wanted to just be reasonable and fair as possible whenever I do these, so adjusting mine to seventy percent did raise the value to one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand.
In, in our, in our information, the assessor has three sales, did you, did you do anything with that?
Just mentioned about like the, what the quick stats were, of the sales price per room.
Oh, that was the per room, that's, okay.
All right, assessor, apparently the taxpayer is now saying he wants a million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, and/or a million, nine-eighty, seven-eighty-five. Assessor amenable to either one of those figures?
Uh, did you have a calculator, how much is per room if we did the one-nine-eight... One-nine-eight-zero, seven-eighty-five, divided by fifty-five, I think it would be fine to do the one million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, seven-eighty-five.
All right, hear that, Mr. Bach?
Yes.
That works out to thirty-six thousand and fourteen dollars per room.
All right, the assessor now is saying that he's would agree to a million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, seven-eighty-five, what, what say you?
I can agree to that.
Okay, so we have an agreement of parties of a million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, seven-eighty-five, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I moved that we set the value for B O E number ninety-five at one million, nine-hundred-and-eight, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, come by agreement of the parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Bach, we've, with your cooperation here, we've, we've settled your property at a million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, seven-eighty-five.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir, well, thank you, well, the letter will be going out Friday showing this agreement.
Okay.
All right, well, we appreciate you, sir.
He's got, he's got the other one.
Yes.
Oh, you got the other one, dude, okay.
So we can close ninety-five.
All right, well, we'll close B O E number ninety-five and open up the hearing on B O E number ninety-six, which is a property at thirty-seven-oh-nine Northwest Thirty-Nice Street in Oklahoma City, and what, what is it, what is this property, Mr. Bach?
This is the hospitality.
Okay, and how many rooms we talking about there?
Um, one moment. Okay, this, it shows eighty-nine rooms.
Okay.
And it's got a reported revenue of three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, value didn't change from last year, one, one million, three-hundred thousand, one-point-three, of the eighty-nine rooms, that's, that's a fourteen thousand, six-hundred value per room. So I do have the actual financials from the owner, and we removed the depreciation and interest from the profit and loss statement, and he was at sixty-nine-point-three percent expense, our industry model was seventy percent, so he is right in line with what the industry showed, using the same ten percent cap rate, we're showing nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars for this account, industry is showing nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, so my opinion of value for this property would be nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand.
All right, because I had nine-hundred even, but you're saying that you're, now you want the board to set it at nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and the assessor appears has assessed it at one-point-three million, what say the assessor on the taxpayer's offer?
Mr. Bach, this is Chad Stayskal with the Commercial Department Appraisal Division, we've exchanged a few emails and one or two phone calls leading up to today, this property, we, we waited and requested twenty-two income and expense information, and didn't receive it until the last day that we were given to make a decision, so reading the note from the, from the appraiser, just waited for twenty-two income and expense data, but it was never sent to us until the last day, emailed agent letting them know, letting him know that he had to deny the appeal, so what, only included in the original appeal was twenty-nineteen income only, that's all we have with the informal, income and expense just for twenty-nineteen. we have with the informal, income and expense, just for twenty-nineteen. We didn't receive their, your cover of the page of the industry standard, uh, with your income approach model on it. So we did go ahead and, uh, you know, look over it. This value on this property is still at a market value that was set due to a twenty-twenty-two hearing, excuse me, a twenty-twenty hearing. The current value per room on this property is fourteen thousand, six hundred and seven. Our comps range from sixteen thousand, three hundred and four to twenty-seven thousand, nine forty-one. So if, uh, if we would have received some more income and expense information, we would have definitely considered it, as we have with his other properties. So that's all we had to look at, board.
All right, here's the, the question for the assessor now, is that the taxpayer is asking for nine hundred and ninety thousand, do you accept or reject that figure?
I would reject that.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Bach, the assessor has rejected the nine hundred and ninety thousand offer, so, uh, what, what, what if anything else you'd like to tell us about this property?
Well, we did receive the financials later. I know we sent it to the, um, assessor the last day of the informal, uh, process. Um, but once we did send it, um, we thought that this would have been enough time from, from the last day of the informal, so now that the board is, uh, board hearing date, thought that would have been, uh, enough time for the assessor's office to review the information that we did submit, um, to twenty-twenty-two profit and loss statement and the, the both income analysis. I think this one is, you know, it's a pretty straightforward case, uh, much like the previous one. Uh, the, the owner's expense falls right in line with what the industry supports and with what the county uses for their, um, expense when they're running the income analysis. I think we're being reasonable by using the owner's actual and using the ten percent, uh, cap rate. I also feel like I've been reasonable by, um, increasing my opinion of value to nine hundred ninety thousand. I ask that the board give consideration to the income approach, um, and now that you have the actual financials in, in front of you, and you have the, uh, both industry and actual, uh, profit, uh, income analysis in front of you, um, I think there is sufficient enough evidence, uh, to make an adjustment on this property. And reviewing this, you know, at a hotel, you know, the hotel only made three hundred twenty thousand, um, you know, and the value at one point three, that's like, that's a four multiplier, so that's four times the gross revenue that the hotel made. So four, four times on a hotel like this is, is really very high. You know, we typically like to use around the two point five to five range, so, um, basically, um, you know, I think we've done everything we can to show that an adjustment is warranted, and using that sixty-nine percent actual expense and the ten percent cap at nine hundred ninety thousand, um, I believe that's a, that's a fair value for this property.
Okay, anything else at this point?
Uh, no, that's, that's all I have. I, you know, I have submitted the actual profit and loss statement and analysis.
Okay. We'll hear from the assessor now.
Uh, no, board, only if we were to receive that information at the time of the informal, we might have, the, the appraiser might have had more time to review it than just that last day. That's all, sir.
Okay.
Is, is the assessor able to review it, you know, now, like, now that we're at the hearings, it will be the evidence?
Well, this is an appeal from the informal hearing, so we don't really consider evidence that wasn't presented at the informal.
Okay, okay, but yeah, we did send it, uh, the like, the last thing, they just didn't have time though.
Okay. All right. Uh, assessor, anything else? You're sticking it to one point three million?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, the assessor, uh, it's hanging tight with the one point three million. But, uh, you got anything else you want to tell us, Mr. Bach?
No, uh, I guess if, if the board feels uncomfortable to give the, my values of nine point nine, uh, I ask that maybe they can meet us in the middle between the assessor's one point three and the nine hundred ninety dollars.
Oh, okay, well, uh...
What was the twenty-two valuation?
That would have been, Ms. Thompson, that would have been one million, the current, still the current, right, one million, three hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, it's been the same since two thousand twenty, when it was set in hearing?
Yes, sir.
I did have a question. What, what does the assessor use as the expense? Is it seventy, seventy percent or seventy-two, or what is that?
We, we typically, that's the maximum we'll allow, 'cause a lot of properties, the actuals will go past the seventy into the eighties or nineties where it creates a negative value, so we...
Right. So you cap it at seventy?
Yes, sir.
Did you hear all that, Mr. Bach?
Yes, I did, yeah, that's why, I think we're being fair by, you know, using the seventy percent and, and the act owner's actuals, uh, for the expense. I think, I mean, the assessor is right, if they had time to review this, I think they would have made an adjustment. So that's why I'm, I'm hoping that the board can see that and can make an adjustment on it.
Well, uh, if I understand you right, you're wanting to now reach a midpoint between that nine ninety and one point three, which would be, by my calculation, one million one hundred, or, you know, one million one hundred and forty-five thousand, is that correct?
Yes, that, that's what my calculation came out to as well. Yeah, I'm just, I'm suggesting that if, if the board felt that they didn't want to give my full value of nine hundred ninety thousand, um, and to, to meet me and the assessor at least in the middle, uh, for a fair compromise at one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, um, I would accept that.
Let me ask you, you said that your multiple you think is fair is between two and five, and you chose three here. If you had chosen four, you'd be where the assessor is, and the value hasn't changed in three years. Can you tell me why you picked three for this? And, and, and why you, why you want to come in lower than it's been for the last three years?
Uh, because that, using a single-year direct cap, uh, income analysis, we're showing that the value should be lower. I don't believe we represented the count in twenty-twenty.
Okay.
But I, I, I don't know what the previous agent or owner presented in twenty-twenty. But the, the multiplier that I referenced, that's what our industry, uh, data shows, that, you know, when an investor looks to buy a property, they look at a income multiplier of two point five to three times, um, the gross revenue.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said two point five to five. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
If I understand you right, you're now off, uh, you'll agree to a million one hundred and forty-five thousand on this property, correct?
That's correct.
What say the assessor? Agree or disagree?
Disagree.
Okay, the assessor disagreed or rejects the offer, sticks with his one point three million. Anything else you want to tell us about this property, Mr. Bach?
No, I think I've covered everything, and just trying to be, uh, reasonable and possible, just trying to get this settled out, um, but that, that's all I have.
All right, well, assessor, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and close the hearing on BOE number ninety-six. Mr. Bach, we will meet, the board will meet Friday, will determine what we think the fair market value of this property is, and, uh, a letter will go out Friday stating what we've found, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your, uh, information, and we appreciate your...
He's got the next one.
No problem.
He has all three of them.
Oh, you got all eight.
Yeah, one more.
All right, well, then I'll close the hearing on BOE number ninety-six. Open up the hearing on BOE number ninety-seven. Looks like this is a two-oh-nine North Walnut, uh, H and H Lodging LLC. What, what, uh, what is this property, Mr. Bach?
This is a, a loft, hotel.
A what?
A loft.
A loft.
A L O F T.
Yeah.
All right, and the assessor has assessed this property at nine million, or initially nine million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight fifty-four. Looks like if they came down to nine million, one ninety-five, nine oh-four. And, Mr. Bach, you're asking us to assess this property at eight million, seven seventy, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Now, tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Okay, just one moment, I'm trying to find, uh, some county debt that was submitted to me. Okay, I have located that now. All right, so this property is in a different class, a higher class than the previous two we were discussing. And, one moment, let me pull up another form. And for this one, we are, we, we have both the industry model and the actual profit and loss model, um, in efforts to try to get this settled out. I am using, I'm offering the eight million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, which is from the industry income model. The, the hotel, uh, did report three point five million in revenue, um, and then we're just using the same, um, the same expense that the county uses, um, except we have the three percent for reserve, um, added in to our analysis. Uh, because this is, you know, upscale brand franchise property, you know, the owner is responsible to make the current trend update that the franchise requires, and that money is, has to be set aside each year by the owner, and it's a two thousand fourteen property, so, uh, property improvement plan is going to be needing, is going to be needed to be done, uh, in the next year or two, because the franchise will require that. So the three percent for reserve that we're adding in to the expense is to take that into consideration. So we're using a total of seven, seventy-four plus the three, so we've got the seventy-seven percent for expense, and then we're using the same cap rate that the county uses, the ten point two-five. So applying that gives us the valuation of eight million, seven hundred and seventy thousand. When using the owner's actual expense, um, he was, he's showing seventy-three percent, about seventy-four percent for, uh, for expenses. So by using the seventy-four percent, uh, we're, we're right in line with what the owner's actual expense was, and using the same, you know, we're using thin cap rate, I think the, you know, the eight hundred seventy, eight hun, eight million, seven hundred and seventy thousand is a fair valuation. I know the county, uh, gave us a slight adjustment based on their income analysis, they're a little bit under one, nine point two million. The value per room, sixty-eight thousand. But, um, looking at this, I mean, usually we also make, you know, an adjustment for the intangible business value of the property, like, to make things, uh, just easier and to do a straight, direct cap income analysis, we're only using the gross income less expense. So, um, I just, I ask that more give consideration to our valuation of eight million, seven hundred and seventy thousand. That's all.
Okay. All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
Hi, this is Jason again. Uh, you can see, this is a, of, in a premier location in the Deep Deuce neighborhood. Here's like the OKC Dodgers ballpark here. Downtown is just right to the west, so it's in a really great neighborhood right there. One thing that we need to also consider is there are two buildings on this account. It also has an income-producing parking lot, right next to it. Um, and another thing to consider is it sold March ninth, twenty-twenty-one, for ten million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The sale was considered invalid due to personal property being involved, but there was personal property taken out of it when it was placed on its market value.
And it was ten million, what?
It was purchased at ten million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
What was the date?
On March ninth, twenty-twenty-one. And for that personal property adjustment, uh, it got placed on for the nine million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four.
Initially?
Initially, yes. Uh, the sales team looked at it and made that adjustment. It is currently on at this new rate that we put on for sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars per room. And the hearing officer used the actual income and expense here on this, even going above the seventy percent threshold for the expenses, and used the owner's seventy-three point seven nine percent expenses with a ten point two-five cap rate. And then the actual personal property assessment from the business personnel was accounted for, so a deduction of seven hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars was taken out of that. And that's what got us to that number of nine million, one hundred, ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. Another thing, this is a very nice, uh, this building is reinforced concrete, I mean, it is really high-quality building. Much different than the other ones we discussed earlier.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no.
All right, did you hear all that, Mr. Bach?
Yes, sir, I did.
All right, do you have a response that you'd like to offer?
Yes, sir, yes, and, uh, and, uh, Jason made some good points, um, you know, this is a much higher class property, obviously, than the, the other two. Uh, it's in the upscale, uh, hotel, and, yes, there was a purchase price, um, in, in twenty-twenty-one for ten point five million, and the county did the correct thing to remove the, the personal property, but there also needs to be further deduction from that purchase price of the business value of this hotel. Uh, 'cause, because this is a franchise hotel, um, there is a quite a bit of intangible business value associated with its name, and so when the buyer purchased the property, he's buying that revenue stream, he's buying that name, and he's buying that, that ongoing concern. So it's not, it's not just buying the, you know, the brick and mortar and the land, so that intangible value needs to also be deducted from the purchase price. And we usually use about seventeen percent, um, at, at the, at the value that the county had at nine point five, you know, that, that was with the personal property deducted. So when you make the further deduction of that business value, the value comes in to eight million, eight million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, when you also take into account that intangible value. So I think by me coming in at eight, eight million, seven hundred and seventy thousand using the income approach, uh, the only difference is that we're adding in that three percent reserve, because this is an older, getting into an older property that will need that update soon, um, I think that is a fair valuation for the board to consider. If I have anything else to add, I mean, I think, um, you know, and when we look at the owner's actual, um, expense, you know, that's why the county is using a little bit higher of, uh, of the expense for their model, is because the owner did have a seventy-four percent expense after we've removed any not allowable expenses, so, um, adding in that three percent reserve is fair, and it is what, what the industry shows. You know, usually, uh, the industry shows that it can be two to six percent for the reserves, and, uh, three percent, I think, is, is also fair, I'm coming in at the low end of what the industry supports. So with, with that being, with that being said, you know, with the purchase price, less business... So with that being, with that being said, you know, with the purchase price less business value, it's coming in right at about the eight point five, eight point seven range, depending on how much you deduct for that business value. I have to the board give consideration to adding in, you know, just the three percent for reserve on the expense and give us, and my opinion of value of eight million seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, anything else from the assessor?
There's already been a reduction here to the nine million one hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred and four dollars. And it is my opinion that that building and property is worth all of that.
Okay. All right. Nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing on BOE number ninety-seven. Mr. Bach, we will, the board will meet on Friday, that's tomorrow, and determine what we think the property is worth and we'll send you a letter telling you what our decision was.
Okay, excellent, yes, and this one is my last one.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and close the hearing on BOE ninety-seven. I appreciate your preparation on this, Mr. Bach. And.
Thank you.
You've given us a lot, a lot to think about here. So we'll close the hearing on this. Appreciate your preparation and the letter will go out Friday, okay?
Excellent, thank you very much, y'all have a good day.
You too, thank you, bye. Okay, that's the last one I've got. The docket, any citizens, I don't see any, any comments from the board? Do we have any?
Yes.
Do you guys aliens?
Nothing.
That's what an alien would say, yeah.
So I did, wanted to ask the board on the record here, so I did have some contact from our sovereign citizen, Christine Sayo. And I'm going to try to make further contact with her, but it has been difficult to ask. So it seems that she is wanting to not actually, if I'm understanding her correctly, she's not actually wanting to appear either in person or by phone. She has a written affidavit that she wants to act as her appeal, in a sense. Now, I'm clarifying with her to make sure I'm understanding correctly. I don't see anywhere in the statutes that that's permitted, but I know, especially you, Mr. Crowley had a lot more experience than me with these meetings. And so is that anything that you've ever experienced, is there a precedent of that?
Well, for these sovereign citizens, it's, there's all kinds of unique things that they'd like to offer. But at point of fact, this is the, this is Oklahoma and the United States of America. As well as what we follow, do not recognize a sovereign citizen business. So did they timely appeal?
Well, and that's where it gets even more complicated. So they sent us an affidavit on, actually Saint Patrick's Day, March seventeenth. It was not the correct form. And so initially, we did not recognize it. We'd said, well, this is not correct, this is not the right form. After some contact with Gretchen Crawford at the assessor's office, she said that it was the opinion of the assessor's office, that their contact was sufficient to basically be considered a formal appeal. I disagree with that personally, but I deferred to the assessor. I talked to my supervisor, she said, roll with it. So we recognized it as a, as a formal appeal. I have had no contact with her since, prior to yesterday. Have tried to reach out to her many times, so it sounds like she is just wanting this affidavit that she submitted, which from the looks of it, kind of just states why she is a sovereign citizen and that she believes that this is her family homestead. Now, I'm not going to speak to exactly what it was, but that's the gist of it. She wants that to be recognized as her appeal. And I read the statutes this morning and I don't see anything that says that that's proper. So I did want to check with you before we brought it before the board.
Well, personally, I'm not inclined to recognize a sovereign citizen in a legal proceeding because once we've done that, could be a tar baby that we cannot get rid of. And I don't think that the jurisdiction for this board requires a proper appeal form to be timely filed. And if that was not done, we don't have jurisdiction in the first place.
That's, that's my.
Well, there's a couple of issues I have with it. One is not appearing. The other one is trying to get an affidavit in place which could set a legal precedent. And I'm not an attorney, but as a layman looking at it, that's an issue with me. So I don't think it meets the criteria that we used earlier when someone had a different form and they, but they were timely and it wasn't really their fault. I mean, there were, there was some confusion in that, but there was reasonable efforts to make it right. So I, I would have difficulty hearing this hearing under, under both these circumstances.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, then.
Well, I will, I will run that by my supervisor. We'll likely send out a rejection letter to her, basically stating it wasn't filed timely, but I'll just keep you updated if anything happens.
All right, I guess for record, I've been sued by these sovereign citizens, I don't know how many times.
Well, now, is hers a time, a time issue or a form issue?
Well, that, so that's the thing. So I believe if I'm remembering correctly, because, you know, I haven't even really considered the form because that was something we talked about several months ago with Gretchen, my supervisor. If I'm remembering correctly, the seventeenth was her deadline and we did receive that from her on the seventeenth. However, it was not the correct form. So initially, it was rejected. It was pushed through based on the advice of Gretchen and my supervisor. So the issue that I brought before you today was simply that she's not wanting to appear in person or by phone, the way I understand it. However, if you want to revert back to our previous issue, I can certainly run that by them.
So it really is, if she doesn't want to appear at all and just send an affidavit, that's my issue.
And that was, that was what I, I can't before here to, um, and, because I, I know that the statutes say that the taxpayer is permitted to appear in person, by phone, or through affidavit. Now, the way I always understood that was through a representative affidavit. However, you know, it doesn't, at least from what I can read on the statute, it doesn't further elaborate that statement.
She took that literally. I bet she read that statute.
Yeah, and so that's why I want to check with you is has anyone ever actually appeared by literal only affidavit? Which is not the way I have read that statute in the past, so.
You know, it was my opinion, in my opinion only, that we don't have jurisdiction here.
Okay. All right, well, you're welcome for a quest today opinion if you'd like, but we'll of course, of course defer to what you want to say.
Okay. All right. Anything else? We are meeting next week?
Uh, just one day, I believe.
Monday and Friday?
Yes, so Monday will be our hearings and then the decision day.
Okay.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Hold the favor.
Aye. See you in the morning.
So we got a next week, next week.